Recording and then with the clerk. Thank you. Now would you please call the roll?
Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
Alderwoman Bukovic. Alderman Doherty. Alderman Galhern.
Here.
Alderman Wheezy. Alderman Schmelsling.
Here.
Alderwoman Shaw.
Here.
Right, public comment. Glendale residents, business owners and property owners are invited to speak to the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda but are within the city's ability to regulate or control. Is there anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to the mayor and council on a non-agenda item? All right, don't see anyone wishing to be recognized. Is there anyone on the Zoom that wishes to speak to the mayor and council on a non-agenda item? If so, you may unmute and state your name and address. No, that's the cursor. That's, that's our cursor. Yep. All right, so there's no one on the Zoom wanting to be addressed either. Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda, which had three items, which is the adoption of the minutes for our last meeting, approval of monthly reports, and the 2022 Arbor Day proclamation. Can I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please?
Agreed.
Moved by Alderwoman Shaw, second of Alderman Doherty. With any discussion? Okay.
There are some typographical errors that I've already sent to Megan. It's just housekeeping.
Okay, thank you. All right, without objection, then, the consent agenda is adopted. All right, new business. First item is a proclamation designating April as Women's History Month in the city of Glendale.
Agreed.
Moved by Alderwoman Shaw.
Second.
Second of Alderman Galhard. Is there any discussion? Thank you, Alderman Bukovic. Okay. All right. So all those in favor of adopting the proclamation designated April as Women's History Month, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Proclamation is adopted. Next item, item 4B, North Shore Health Department's request for environmental health consortium fee increase. Mr. Hoffland?
Yes, including your packet as information as received by the Environmental Health Consortium. They are recommending a 5% increase. This fee comes after three years of no fee increases. The fees cover such things as licensing of food establishments, temporary events, farmers markets, public pools, and hotels in the North Shore area. We do have representatives of the North Shore Environmental Health Consortium if you care to have, if you have any questions of them.
All right, thank you. Members of the council, do you have any questions? Alderman Galhard?
Do all of the North Shore communities have to approve this for this to go into effect?
Yes, they, whenever there are fee increases, then they are, the Health Department Board approves them and sends them out to the seven communities, and the seven communities would have to adopt them. If, if any community does not, then they have to go back and start over. All right, any other questions? Alderman Doherty?
Where are the approval process?
I do not know. Do you know, Stravon? Hi. We need blinds for these windows, yes.
Good evening. I'm Brad, similarly, senior environmental specialist for the North Shore Health Department. And we are in the approval process where we have had it already passed by the Board of Health and our fiscal agent, the Village of Brown Deer.
Okay. Questions from the council? Alderman Schmelsling?
Just a comment. 5% over three years doesn't seem excessive. How are your costs compared to that?
Well, we're a fee-funded program. So everything that is brought in by all the fees are covered within that cost. So that 5%, you're right, it's not a lot, but actually typically we would do a 3%, but because Department of Ag is actually increasing their fee to us to run the program, we're a contracted agent. We've actually added the additional 2% onto that 3% to cover that. And that covers that for the following year and the year after. So we actually have a couple of years to cover that.
Built in, okay.
Sure. Any other questions? All right, could I have a motion to adopt the fee structure for the fee increase for the Health Department? Moved Alderman Galhard is our second, second of Alderwoman Shaw. Any further discussion by members of the council? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. And just a thank you to the Health Department. I think you've had the hardest job the last two years, so.
Thank you for the recognition.
Yeah, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is item 4D, a joint resolution of the common council and the Community Development Authority requesting an extension of the life of tax incremental financing district number eight, also known as the Bay Shore District. The CDA met at 5:30 today and unanimously approved this and recommended it to the common council. I do have Mr. Cronwell that asked to speak to this item, so Mr. Cronwell, would you like to speak, please? You'll need to step up to the microphone. Sorry, John.
Hi, Robert Cronwell, 7530 North Applewood Lane. I was just looking over some of the documentation. I apologize. I tried to catch the presentation at the Community Development Authority meeting, but there was something wrong with the audio. I couldn't hear anything that was going on, so. I just noticed in the, in the resolution that was put forth, it mentions on page two that the incremental revenues are estimated for the current remaining life of the, of the TID eight to be just under nine million, leaving a net present value shortfall to its, as its recovery projected costs and the estimated sum of 25 million. But in the documentation that the owner brought forward, they're projected to earn, to be able to pull out 32 million during their remaining life of the TIF or thereabouts. So I don't understand where those numbers are coming from.
I believe that 32 million was the total amount that they would have received from the beginning of the renegotiated development agreement. So that was several years ago. The nine million that you're discussing would be if we did this last three, this three-year extension on the additional years.
That's the additional amount? Not, that's not how it reads.
I believe it is the additional amount.
Oh, well, that's not how it reads at all. It makes it sound like it's.
Do you have any other questions or comments before, because I can have Mr. Fuchs come up and he may be able to answer that in his discussion, or Mr. Kirk as well?
Well, what I was wondering is, why are we considering handing an additional, by my math, it looked like about $11.4 million to the owner of the Bay Shore property when we already have a development agreement in place and they already agreed to do everything they were gonna do based on the $32 million estimated amount at the current end date of 2033? We just seem to be handing them an extra $11 million out of the goodness of our hearts. And I'm very confused because there's nothing in the original developer agreement that indicates that we were looking to extend the TIF any further or we're gonna let them, you know, look for other ways to extract more revenue out of there. I don't understand why our tax dollars are being diverted in this way. And we don't seem to be getting anything out of it because the agreement's already in place and it doesn't look like there's gonna be any changes where there's more for the city. I don't.
Questions you're asking were actually addressed in the Community Development Authority meeting that you were not able to hear the audio. So how about if I have Mr. Fuchs come up and he'll do his presentation that he did for the CDA? I believe those same questions will be answered because they, those, those did come up already, or not those questions, but those were part of his presentation in the previous meeting.
All right, thanks.
Yep, thank you. And while Mr. Fuchs is, Alderman Galhard just leaned over and said, we didn't do foresee. There was an email sent out by Mr. Hoffland shortly before the meeting indicating that the folks from County were not ready to make the presentation tonight. So I just jumped over that one and went right to 40. Sorry.
Regarding that, as a point of order, I would suggest us to take a motion that says postpone this presentation until the April, whatever the date, 11 meeting, just to.
Was there an action item attached to the memo? It was just a presentation? Okay. If there were an action here requested, I would, it's just a presentation, we can just move that for scheduling purposes. I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Fuchs. Go ahead.
Sure. The, going back to how this originates, the agreement that Mr. Cronwell was referring to, when Bay Shore went back to the lender on a deed in lieu of foreclosure, and keep in mind that was pre-COVID and pre a lot of things that have affected retail. We had a meeting with the new ownership, the new ownership partnered with Cypress. Kirk Williams from Cypress is here. Mary Mokwa from, the manager of Bay Shore is here, but when we talked to them, we reached a new arrangement and the essence of that arrangement or deal was that if Bay Shore, instead of fire selling their asset, because at that time, there was probably in the neighborhood of about 180 million still owed on a loan, instead of fire selling that asset, reinvest in it, rehabilitate it, maybe someday you will get it back to a value where you'll be glad that you kept that investment. Because all they got was the property. There wasn't recourse against the owner that had given it to them in a deed in lieu of foreclosure. And so what that caused to happen is there was quite a substantial bond indebtedness outstanding. It was in the 60 million area, over 60 million, more like 67. We applied the various security funds, the reserve fund required with municipal bonding, what we called the stabilization fund that we had set up to accumulate Bay Shore tax increment for a rainy day. And that still left a balance of almost 43 million. And so the new deal that we made with them was if they paid that 43 million, in effect, Glendale now has no debt. We would be very cooperative in their efforts to rehabilitate that asset. And that's the agreement that we reached, which the increment from that agreement would have generated, and Mr. Cronwell's right, call it over $32 million. The problem with that is that the idea of rehabilitating that mall got more and more difficult for them at every point in time. For one thing, COVID had an incredible impact on retail. For another, things like Amazon, you name it, the decline in retail, you see it everywhere around you. It's nothing new. It's nothing unusual. And the problem with that is not just the letter of the deal. In other words, I'm trying to address that question, why would we be asking you to do this now? Or recommending to you as staff that you do this now? The problem isn't just the letter of the agreement, it's also the spirit of it. That $43 million was treated as a project cost. Now, whether that project cost would have been recouped in the life of the TIF or not, you really don't know when you make that deal. If all of a sudden retail is just boom, no COVID, no drop in retail or whatever, the mall goes up to $500 million, they'd probably recover that amount within the life of the TIF. They won't, especially post-COVID and everything else. They won't come close to recovering that amount of money through increments. And one thing I didn't mention at the CDA, and I appreciate that Daryl reminded me, is the figures you're dealing with were also looked at by Baird. And for example, I'll get by their eligible for that TIF. But whether they're going to come $9 million closer or $11 million closer, they will not recoup, defeating our debt. They'll miss by $20 million or more. I'm using round numbers, but $20 million is a substantial amount of money they will miss. And there's not just a, an agreement in place that we would try and get them their project cost back, but it's also in the interest of the city because when you have a single taxpayer in a community this size, that represents such a percentage of your tax base, it's in the city's interest for it to be healthy. And so the idea here is to encourage them in the efforts that they're doing, the residential they're building, getting stores like Target and that sort of thing. So when they came to us with the request, meaning staff and the mayor initially, we looked into it. We looked into what avenues might be available to at least cut their losses in terms of what they can recoup by way of incremental value. And one of the things available is referred to as a tech college or an MATC college extension. And what that relates to is sometime back, the state passed a law that provided state aids to MATC and other tech colleges, cut the levy. When you cut the overall tax levy, you're also cutting increment. And the way that law reads is if the TIF was adversely affected, not in whole, but just adversely affected in terms of the increment it can raise by that law, then you're eligible for this three-year extension. The exhibit you have in front of you with the $1 million, that's Baird's estimate of the impact of the Act 145, this law that I'm. And then the exhibit that has the other figures on, that was prepared in large part with numbers supplied by Bay Shore. But the way this law works, this matter is brought to the CDA and you as a common council because the statute reads, if the city requests the JR B to consider the extension, that's what kicks off the process. Well, the city making a request, that should be done by the governing body, that's you. So we're asking you to make that request and make it in a formal sense by adopting this resolution that is also in your packet. That'll go to the JR B. The JR B will have an option if it wishes to audit these figures. Or when you look at something like, it's a given that the Act 145 affected most TIFs. When you look at the fact that Bay Shore, even with a three-year extension, is not gonna recover that $43 million. Maybe they'll do it through increased development, maybe they'll do it by land sales, whatever they do, but they certainly won't do it through increment. And so that's the purpose for this request. So the short version, if I can kind of put it through the funnel, we did ask them to pay that as a project cost. The intent of that agreement was to hopefully recoup as much as they could out of increment, because that's what you apply increment to, project costs. They're gonna fall short, they're gonna fall short in the millions. And so staff at their request and the mayor have brought this forward to you to consider asking the JR B to give them another three years on the TIF. And by the way, the potential win-win is yes, it's another three years extension. But number one, Bay Shore, by paying off that 43 million, protected all the tax jurisdictions. From what do you do if all of a sudden your TIF has failed and you got a $43 million pile of red ink? And in addition, hopefully, if they keep up the good work, I'm saying that because I'm looking at you. I don't want to say that to Kirk. I don't want to pay him any compliments. He flew all the way up to Texas for that. I'm not doing it. But hopefully, when they're done with this, I would be thrilled to see this be a $400 million asset, a $450 million asset. Because that'll then get divided up among all the taxing jurisdictions. Kirk and Mary are here. I don't know if you have questions of them or if you have questions of me. I'll try and field.
I know three of us were at the CD, four of us were at the CDA meeting, so I guess any other members of the council have additional questions? Alderman Schmelsling?
Just looking at the increment revenue projection sheet, it looks like we've seen, you know, about nine and a half percent growth in the valuation and then 14.4 in these last two years. And then it looks like we're spread out to see continued growth of the property as development continues into 23, 24, and 25. Is that when we're expecting the, the development to be completed with the apartments and everything else, really along that timeframe?
Kirk, wait, nobody on the Zoom can hear you if you're not on a microphone, so, sorry.
Kirk Williams, Cypress Equities, 312 Rosedale.
Hello, guys.
Hello again. Yes, you're exactly right. We looked at that. As a matter of fact, the, the 22, 21 year, the 14.4, that's an estimate. We think that's what's gonna come forward. And then we increased, we kept those kind of 15% increases as estimates going forward, as we considered, continue to see the growth. And you'll see the larger jumps in the assessed value that go instead of your typical three or 4% increases that may happen. It's hard to guesstimate exactly when those will hit, but this is what we do as best we can in looking at what's being built, what the, what's coming on as far as an increase I can see going on in those years.
And so then, the line that is next to the net present value without three-year extension, 8%, that's kind of what you're thinking would be the net present percent over.
Discount rate. That's a discount rate that will take that, that dark blue line, the, right above it, the projected increment revenue, discounting all that back at 8%.
Okay, at 8%. Okay, and that 8% is from the assessed value growth percentages?
The 8% is a discount rate that kind of gives a present value.
Oh, you're using that.
To those future values discounted to the present day. 8% may be considered low. From a conservative, we could probably use a higher number there. We chose to use 8% because some of that increase has yet to be materialized and seen, and so it's, it's kind of an unknown. But so do you go, you know, you may, if it were known, completely known, that 8% may go to a 5% or a 4%, or a 3%, or excuse me, a 5% or 6%. But because much of it is unknown, it's higher, but it could be argued that it could be as high as 10 or 12.
Okay, I see how it was assuming kind of what the growth rate would be. Okay. So really to summarize, what would have been a longer term return on your investment if the development would have happened sooner? That hasn't happened because of extenuating circumstances, COVID and such, so taking it out three more years gives you more time to recoup that.
We, we lost two years, just as the market went on hold from our ability to lease the way we had thought we were. Fortunately, we got fortunate with Target, but the other tenants, we had, we went on hold and then starting back up. So the three years just actually, actually works out from a timing standpoint to, to kind of get those years back. But as you'll see, it, you know, we, we have a, just on aggregate dollars, it's a $9 million shortfall for what we put into it. But that's on aggregate dollars, including, including future dollars. We won't ever get those dollars back from a present value standpoint. We're way short. That's where.
25.
That's the 25 comes in, from a present value standpoint.
Thank you. I just had some questions on the details there. And just from a non-financial aspect, really what I think is important to our residents is seeing continued development there. So I do thank you for making sure things like Target move forward. I see the Culvers and other things moving ahead. So just making sure that continues. Otherwise, you know, a three-year extension isn't good for anybody.
Oh, we're here.
And I would just add, I guess, along these same remarks that are the same, along the lines of the marks of Mr. Williams. The, the real significant growth and increase doesn't come by redeveloping existing property. It comes with all the new construction that's being added. And so we did see a total wine come in. We saw Target come in during that time. And those are redevelopments of existing boxes that already were there at Bay Shore. But the construction now of the 311 residential units, you know, the Culvers opened today, so that's the new construction. That's what is going to significantly increase the value. And that, that took several additional years because of COVID to get off the ground. And so that's where another part of this, you know, you have several years in which the value of the property is lower, which means the increment is lower. Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, well, the CDA met earlier and did already approve the resolution, so I'd like to ask if a member of the common council would like to make a motion to adopt the joint resolution. Moved Alderman Wheezy, is there a second?
A second.
Second of Alderman Schmelsling. Any further discussion from members of the council? All those in favor of adopting the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and the resolution is adopted. Uh, next is a resolution authorizing Director of Public Works to sign and submit the recycling grant application and annual reports to the DNR. Someone like to make a motion to?
Agreed.
Okay, moved by Alderwoman Shaw, is there a second?
Second.
Second of Alderman Galhard. All those in favor of adopting the resolutions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Then we have two ordinance changes, ordinance repealing and replacing section three excavations of, and in streets, alleys, and then ordinance repealing and replacing, another one about permits. So I'm gonna just turn it over to Charlie, I guess. I was gonna say the city administrator. It's not, the head, your head isn't, you can see, no. Hey, it's fine. All right, Charlie.
Take it away?
Yeah.
All right, so these are, these are updates. We did this a couple of years ago. These are actually to make account for different right-of-way permits we're receiving. They're now boring, not just fiber boring. So we figured we needed a resolution to update the current ordinances to make them obviously applicable to what we're receiving now as far as ordinances. So that's, that's for for the excavation. We also adjusted the deposits as well. So that's what these are for, just realignments, taking out city engineer, putting in director of public works, trying to make the ordinances effective and applicable to what we.
Okay, I'm just gonna ask if we can, in adopting these, whoever makes the motion, rather than saying replacing section three, we usually talk about the chapter that it's in. So this is city ordinance 9.4.3. And so if somebody could say replacing section 9.4.3 and not just section three.
I'll make the motion according to what you're seeing.
Okay, so we're just changing the titles, so. All right, so are you, you want to just make a motion to adopt both and block as well?
Oh, for it.
Okay.
I do that for both.
Okay, so Alderwoman Shaw is making a motion to adopt both the ordinance changes with the title of them reading an ordinance repealing or replacing section 9.4.3, 9 point, or 6.3.2. So just making sure that the titles are, are changed. So is there a second to that?
Second.
Second of Alderman Wheezy, any discussion?
One thing.
Alderman Schmelsling, go ahead.
Very seldom do I see fees go down, so thank you for, I guess, looking at that for our businesses to see what we can do to streamline where we maybe didn't need it in the past.
Well, just a quick point. Especially when we did it and when they were coming in, I mean, when we had the, these small cell requests from Verizon two, three years ago, it was rapid fire with these permits coming in. So a lot of them actually were sent out to Clark Deets, who were paying consultant fees on those, so we wanted to recoup that. But now, and I say that and it's gonna ramp up again, I know it, but they've leveled off a little bit, so you know, it's been more in-house review. So yes, correct. It was again, that applicable change that made sense to do.
Any other questions for the Director of Public Works? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Both of the ordinance changes are adopted. Megan, just so you guys know, Megan has given me all these things to sign, so as we've approved something, I've signed and put it up here. I'm not gonna sign these right now. If we can change the title on those, then I'll come sign them tomorrow. Thank you. All right. Next is item 4H, review and approval of revisions to the City of Glendale employee handbook. Mr. Hoffland?
So thank you, Mayor. As you know, on January 1st of 2022, the new paid time off or PTO policy went into effect. As we've gone through several pay periods, we've had requests from not only employees but supervisors or department heads asking for more flexibility as to the increment to be recognized as part of the PTO. Currently, there is a one-hour minimum increment. Both employees and supervisors have asked that that be reduced to a 15-minute increment. So that's what's before you is a change to Article 6, Section E for Sub C.
All right, are there any questions for the city administrator? Alderman Bukovic?
There you go. There you go. So somebody could take 15 minutes of PTO, or does it start at a minimum of one hour? And then it goes into increments of 15 minutes. So at least you take one hour and then it goes in 15-minute increments? Or is it, they can take 15 minutes?
It's the latter. We did discuss your former comment, but ultimately the thought was, say, at the end of the day, someone has to go pick up their kids early. Instead of taking an hour and 15 minute off, they would be allowed to say, to take off at, say, 3:15 if their normal end of the workday was 3:30. In talking with payroll, she identified that's not any additional work above and beyond, whether it be a one-hour minimum or a 15-minute, she was okay with the change as well as the employees and the other supervisors.
I wanted to just make sure if it was a quarter, like taking off 15 minutes early, or if they were late 15 minutes and they wanted to use PTO because of whatever reason, or was it a minimum first an hour and then in a 15-minute increments? Because that, those are two different things and I kind of didn't read it correctly. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion then to approve the revision to the play handbook as, as presented. Term moved Alderman Galhard is our second. Second of Alderwoman Shaw. Alderman Doherty, you look like you want to say something.
Just a question. If it turns out to be, this is a nightmare, can we go back the other way?
Yes, in fact, that was discussed at a management team meeting that we think this is a good change. But ultimately, once it's put in practice, if it becomes an issue, we'll be coming back to you for a subsequent change.
I'm looking at the city who bills in six-minute increments, I believe, right? Almost a tenth of an hour. It's almost a tenth of an hour. Fifteen probably sounds like, sounds a lot easier. Yeah.
One, one thing to mention that in addition to a paid time off, a very structured, uh, benefit, uh, employees can work with their supervisors if they have eligible comp time or compensatory time, which is, as you know, a very informal, uh, program, but this is the structured paid time off program.
Questions or comments? Alderman Schmelsing.
How was it before? I, I know that was before you joined, but was it one hour before?
It's one hour. Yeah, it's currently one hour until you approve a change.
All right, all those in favor approving the change to the employee handbook, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Uh, one abstention, Alderman Vukovich standing. Okay. And Alderman Doherty, just reminder, without collective bargaining agreements in place anymore, the employee handbook can be changed at any time. Um, obviously, we can't make changes to the police without bargaining directly with their union. But for anybody who's not represented by a union, employee handbooks can be changed at any time.
I just worry sometimes you have ideas that look great and you start doing them and they're a nightmare. And it's like, this is way worse than the original problem. That's all.
Yeah. My work, it's half day. How early it's one?
Right, that's what we had to.
Ours is four hours. So I mean, it's.
All right. Um, next, review and approval of MMSD's request for grazing goat pilots to eradicate invasive buckthorn and reforestation plan at sixty-four fifty-nine Sunny Point Lane. And I believe we have Bree Pleer from MMSD on the call today. Mr. Hofflin, did you want to speak before we let Bree, uh, present?
Thank you, Mayor Kennedy. Uh, yes, a memo has been included in your packet, which provides an outline for, for the program. Uh, this is a very generous offer by MMSD to work with the city. Um, as if, if you've been on the Sunny Point Lane property, you'll know that, uh, MMSD has already put a lot of work into mowing. It's called a forestry mow, really cleaned up nicely. However, there are some invasive species. Uh, so MMSD has come forward with this, uh, grazing goat pilot program. So Bree is here to, to explain how that would work.
Thank you for giving me the time. Just call me the crazy goat lady. Um, so as, uh, Mr. Hofflin said, recently, MMSD had contacted the City of Glendale to participate, um, as a pilot site for a new reforestation program that we are trying to launch. Uh, the reforestation program is, is being implemented to support flood management. Um, and this program is working to plant trees for flood management and also in that same vein, uh, removing noxious and invasive weeds, um, and replacing those with native tree and vegetation species. So we were looking for a pilot site. Um, and so, uh, we had approached the former city administrator, uh, Ms. Saafstrom about implementing, um, some forestry mowing on this site and then doing a goat grazing pilot, um, at six four five nine Sunny Point Lane. Um, there was a structure, uh, in the flood plain that had been removed and the site was just overrun with buckthorn, um, and other weeds. And so we had talked to some of the surrounding residents, um, about what might be something they'd like to see at this site. Um, it is up, just upstream of where the Clutch Dam Fish Passage project is occurring. Um, so when we talked to, uh, Kettle Moraine Grazing, who is trying to start out their goat grazing pilot here, um, they've been working with the Ozaki Washington Land Trust in Macwan at Rotary Park with great results. Um, and what we wanted to do with this goat grazing pilot is to show that you can use non-chemical means in order to remove, um, some of these invasive species and do some restoration on these properties. Um, so what we had to do first was go in with forestry mowing. So that takes down the bigger, um, trees and things that the goats won't be able to get. Um, but then we can bring the goats in this spring, set up a fenced area for them to, um, be in, and they will nibble all of the small shoots that will come back up and that sort of stresses out the root balls of the plants. This rotation will happen twice over the summer and then, um, in fall, we will sort of reinvestigate whether, um, we need to move forward with some more invasive removal. But we do plan on doing a restoration plan for this site that will hopefully include, um, some native tree species and native plants. Um, and then forward from there, taking a restoration, um, action. So implementing that plan on the site. Um, and so we're really excited. We've got some funds for, from Fund for Lake Michigan to help support us do this work. Um, and we're really grateful, um, that the City of Glendale has had an open mind in hearing us out on this. So if you have any questions, please feel free to let me know.
Bree, I will start with the first question. Um, I know this is kind of a, a new fun thing happening around the country. You see parks departments use utilizing goats, but usually they're brought into like a park area and allowed to roam an area. Um, you're not allowing them to roam. You're actually going to put up some sort of temporary fencing and just keep them confined to this property. So how many days will they have to be there to be able to eat with all the bad stuff we want them to eat?
So, um, what they've done at Rotary Park in Macwan is they actually put up a temporary electric fence to keep the goats in and to keep other things like coyotes out. Um, it's battery operated. They will get checked on twice a day. We're anticipating since the site is about an acre and a quarter, acre and a half, that maybe they would be out there for a week, two weeks at the most. Then there would be about a six to eight to ten week break to let that vegetation come back up again. And then we would bring the goats back in again for a second grazing pass, um, closer to the fall time. So, um, you know, it'll take about all summer to get that done, then do the plan, then hopefully some implementation maybe next year.
All right. Next question is actually from the alderman of that district. So Alderman Doherty.
It's been Saturday morning wandering, uh, not only that land, all the way to the dam. And, uh, you were correct. Uh, all the neighbors, I, I spoke with, uh, two different groups of neighbors and they were extremely happy with the project. It's quite interesting when they say forest mowing, this is basically a giant wheel that crushes everything in its path. And they've really cleared the land down. There's a few taller dead trees that need to come down yet, but, but I can see where the goats will have a fair running chance at, at, uh, getting that in order. I also would be remiss, as many times I have not been, uh, happy with some MMSD plans. What's currently laid out for the fish passage is really quite impressive. And, uh, if you go back to when we had times, they were going to destroy the other side of the view and make everything not better. This is a big step up and really well planned out. So I'm, I'm quite encouraged by where this is going. I would like one thing to get noted for the city to check into. The, uh, for the dam, one of the things that's happening is some maintenance on the gates that were done eighty-six years ago and haven't been moved. There's cement pieces they took off the top of those that have not been put back and they got like a cone, but a kid could fall in. So I have a picture I'll send to the city, but we should get that remedied.
Thank you.
But really quite encouraged by the whole development, what's going on in that part of the world.
And I guess I just want one clarification there. The, the ugly plan that you didn't like before, that was the Milwaukee County Parks Department. When MMSD took over, they came up with a nice plan on the east.
Unusual.
Yeah. Alderman Vukovich.
Just want to make this very clear on record. This is not for any residents to have goats. This is only for this particular space on county land. And it is only for this particular space.
Yes, we're not changing our city ordinance. Yeah. Alderman Gelhard.
I just had a question. I, I read through the, uh, the, you know, the process that was described, uh, on the agenda item. And so you have the goats that are grazing for one to two weeks, then you, you pull them out, uh, and then the vegetation regrows. And you bring the goats in a second time to regraze. I guess my question is, why not do the reforestation after the first grazing?
Sure. That's a great question. Um, so, um, buckthorn is a pretty voracious plant as, as a lot of noxious and invasive weeds are. So what you really want to do is have more than one grazing because they will continue to sprout up new shoots. And every time the plant has to re-sprout, it stresses out that root ball just a little bit more. Um, and when it has to use all of its nutrients and energy to do that, it helps the plant die and it reduces the chance of the plant coming back.
And one other question, uh, are you confident that the electric fence will keep out coyotes? Cause I know that they're there.
Yes. So we've seen this done at Rotary Park in Macwan. Um, they are going on their third year of rotating paddocks within the Puget Woods at Rotary Park. And to my knowledge, from speaking with the Ozaki Washington Land Trust, who's run that project, they haven't lost a goat yet. There's definitely coyotes in Macwan.
Yes, actually more in Macwan than here. So, um, when, when we had to do our coyote, uh, management plan for the city, we actually looked at Macwan's example because they have a lot more coyotes even than we do. So Alderman Weezy.
All right, thank you. Uh, this is, um, a question that was posed to me by one of my residents. Uh, the question was, uh, with those, uh, the goats consuming the, uh, buckthorn, what about then spreading the buckthorn when they eliminate?
That's a great question. Um, so what we did with the forestry mowing was we took down all the larger fruiting trees. So the buckthorn shoots that are going to come up out of the soil now will not have seed attached to them because they will be too young to produce seed. Um, so that was a really important part of that forestry mowing was to get all of those large fruiting, what I call mama bear trees down, um, because they're the ones that are producing that seed load that is getting dropped then into the soil. And actually a little bit of, um, goat excrement is great fertilizer for the soil.
Okay, but the, uh, you just mentioned that, uh, they did the removal of the trees or, uh, they basically ground them up. Uh, might some of that seed property still be there and ingestible by the goats therefore continuing life?
That's another good question. So there's a couple of different things going on here. The goats usually won't eat anything that's below four to, or four to six inches above the ground. They don't, they're kind of lazy. They don't want to go all the way down to the ground. They're not ground foragers, so they won't be picking those up. They also prefer the leafy, um, greens that come up. And then, you know, one of the reasons that we're going to again, look at what's coming back up after that second graze is that there, you know, there is going to be a, a, maybe a dormant seed load in that soil, um, from where the existing buckthorn had been dropping seeds for the last few years. Um, but I think we might be able to manually handle that then after the goats have come through.
Thank you.
Alderman Schmelsing.
I know this area isn't highly trafficked and maybe Alderman Doherty would have a better idea of, were there many concern of, you know, people running into the fence? I don't know what type of voltage that runs, but just from a general safety perspective, I'm hoping it's well signage and, and the likes.
Yes, we will be creating some signage, um, that asks folks to let the goats work. They're there to do a job. Um, we will be sending out our Fresh Coast Ambassador Crew twice a day to ensure that the fence is still on and operating and that there is water there. Um, I will be hosting, um, a meeting for some residents in the immediate area to talk to them about this project pending approval, um, this evening. So that all of the residents that are down there are sort of aware of what's going on, you know, if they kind of let their dogs roam. Couple of times I've been down there, there's a very nice, large dog that, that likes to roam the area. So, um, just for that, you know, one to two week period that the goats are there, you know, we'll make sure that there's plenty of signage up, that the residents are well aware of when that's going to happen, um, so that everyone can be informed. And we'll certainly work with the city to ensure that the city knows, uh, when that's going to happen.
Anything else? Alderman Shaw.
Again, not, uh, looking at the area in question lately, but I am curious about noise and smell.
They're not super noisy. They're more quiet than you would think. There is a little, I mean, they definitely do make some noise. Um, there aren't going to be enough of them, I think, to make a difference with smell. Um, but we have had extensive conversations with the neighbor that's, um, just downstream of that site. And, um, she is comfortable and on board, um, with this process coming through.
Alderman Doherty.
And one other item I'd want to make sure is it's actually signage because all this is on property, private property. And even the lane is not public. So people can't walk up to where the goats are. So as far as the general public can't really get there without trespassing. And everyone I talked to, the two people who are closest to this are a hundred percent in favor of it. So I don't, I don't think we're going to have an issue with that. And I think it's certainly worth a try because it is quite challenging to clear buckthorn. You cut it, you get two back. You cut it again, you get two more. I mean, it's, it's nuts. So at the end of the day, I think this is a pretty good approach to try.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, we do have a recommendation from staff, uh, that we approve the pilot project with MMSD. Someone like to make a motion?
I'll move.
Move Alderman Doherty.
Second.
Second of Alderman Gelhard. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. All right. Thank you, Bree.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Yep, take care. All right. The next item on the agenda is Commission Committee Board and Staff Reports, and I will start with Alderman Vukovich. Anything to report? Thank you, Alderman Doherty.
What's the report tonight?
Thank you, Alderman Gelhard.
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Weezy.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to defer to Alderman or Alderman Shaw because, uh, for the ARB, because I was out of town, but I did attend via Zoom, but she chaired the meeting. Uh, but I also attended the library board. And there are several, uh, items I'd just like to bring to the council's attention. Uh, first of all, there was, uh, scheduled to have a fundraising report, but no report was presented. Uh, second item in discussion of the new structure is that there was a lot of discussion on a drive-up full service window at, at the, uh, plan, uh, early on, and that has been dropped. It is now going to just be a drive-up book drop. They said it was going to be cost prohibitive to fully, uh, provide for service for a full, full-blown drive-up, uh, uh, for the library. Uh, the new design, they are definitely incorporating a cafe, uh, in the facility. And, uh, the, the library designs may need to be further modified to provide for proper security gates that will prevent people from entering the library when the library's closed and the cafe is open. Then, uh, fourth item was that the building is a five-story U-shaped building that, uh, four floors will be apartments with, uh, below ground parking. Uh, the first floor that will house the library, there will also be a significant portion of that, uh, structure that will be an unknown retail business or an office facility, uh, plus a cafe. So the library is still slated for approximately twenty-four thousand square feet. Uh, but that may design and, uh, that, that may flex a little bit. And there remains approximately eighty outdoor parking spots available to all tenants of the building. And then finally, the new library director should be selected by the end of this month. So.
Yeah, we have about twenty at the current North Shore Library. It's one of the reasons why it was so difficult to have that as an election polling place, because there's no parking.
Understood, but then it's also eighty places for, you know, four stories of apartments, the, the retail.
Okay.
You know, all entities within that building will then share that, uh, those eighty spots. And they're not all going to be right in front of the library. They're going to be around the building. So.
All right. Thank you. Alderman Schmelsing.
Um, a fourth of July committee, I think the most notable thing is we are, uh, looking still for a primary food vendor. So if anyone knows someone who'd like to take part in that, the, the brick decided they only wanted to sell alcohol this year. And then also the, um, we reached out to the Bavarian and they were, um, they declined. I don't have the details. So we're looking for a primary, like, you know, the standard burgers type, um, vendor. Um, we're considering in light of not having like the brick or the Bavarian, we might end up doing the alcohol sales ourselves. We're looking into those logistics and, um, we're still waffling a bit on the time of the parade due to potentially needing to cover for the, um, the shift changes of the police department. So a lot of things up in the air trying to, to settle out at this point. So that's what I'll be doing this week now that I'm back.
Alderman Shaw?
ARB Committee did meet and all the projects that are on the agenda, I don't remember if it was two or three, but they're all approved. Three, thank you. It's like, I can't remember and I wasn't going to look up the agenda. So, but I know they're all approved. So each one had great projects that just enhancing their homes. And then Music in the Glen, we have five bands for the concerts, for the five concerts that we have. We're in the process of sending out the contracts. And so as soon as we get everything squared away and welcome to Glendale, we'll be handling the fundraising for us. And we're pretty good on our costs at this point, but we'll see how things go. Because I noticed one of them, we have to double-check on sound for their purposes for what we have. So, but otherwise, we're going to be moving forward.
All right, thank you. I'll go over to Police Chief.
I have two items. First of all, if you're aware, we have five vacancies in the police department. We made some conditional offers. We hope to have three new police officers at the beginning of the month and then hire the next two in August when the recruit school starts. Secondly, last year at the council meeting, the council agreed, approved an agreement between the police department and the Department of Transportation for mitigation services for the police department and it's involved for the I-43 project. So whenever I-43 DOT has issues where they need us to block off traffic, do escorts, they would pay us, reimburse us our amounts. That contract is a three-year contract, although they put it out every year. We just received the second contract for 2022, a couple of weeks ago. The mayor signed it. They have increased the amount of reimbursement total to $18,000 this year. Just as a matter of fact, we had a 10,001 last year and they never called us for anything. So no money was spent. I am assuming that will start to increase as they start working their way down here. And just as a reminder, there will be a final contract for 2023 that will come out probably later this year, if it goes like they did this year halfway through 2023. So just up to date on that.
Thank you. City Clerk.
Election Day is Tuesday. Early voting is through Thursday until 4:30 and then Friday 8 to 5. And please do not use the Dropbox. So if everybody could remind their constituents to not put their ballots in the Dropbox. Thank you.
Have you been getting a lot in the Dropbox? I'm just curious how well it's been communicated.
No, I mean, it's posted on the Dropbox and in the newsletter, Facebook and on the website.
Yeah.
Most people have.
All one doing it tonight as I walked in.
Yeah.
Kept them on the shoulder.
Is it a ballot? Because they can use the Dropbox for other things. Oh, okay.
The Attorney?
Well, as I'm sure you know, the Wisconsin Supreme Court recently had made a decision concerning the districts for state assembly and senate as well as the federal districts for Congress. The decision on the state districts got essentially, long story short, reversed by the. There we go, okay. There was a decision by the US Supreme Court that affected that. And one of the things that that will make, changes that will make on the local level is if you have one of those districts that trisects a individual voting ward, we have to redo some, we have to redo some of the wards. And now with not knowing yet how those state districts are going to come out, it's not a whole heck of a lot we can do right now. But the good news is it doesn't really impact anything for the April election. But, you know, people are going to have to go out and get signatures for, you know, the fall and August. And they're not, not everybody knows exactly what their final district is going to be. So there's a lot of moving parts and it's moving rather quickly. But at some point, I anticipate bringing you something, hopefully in April, that will potentially reset some of the local wards that we have to do as a requirement under state law. But I don't know what that's going to be yet because we don't know what the, we don't know what the districts are. So more, more to come, more to come.
Thank you. And Mr. Hoffman?
No updates.
All right, thank you. I just have two things. At the MMSD meeting this morning, the 2021 Annual Performance Report was released and I'll have that available for anyone who wants to look at it. I can leave it with the clerk or somebody at the, at the front desk if you want to stop in later in the week and look at it as well. So that's available. And then last week, as my family and I were vacationing in Portugal, I had the opportunity to meet with the mayor of Villarreal, Portugal, where I lived 32 years ago. And I presented the book about the city of Glendale as well as a copy of The Making of Milwaukee. And I was presented, that's what I presented to them. And I was given the history of the neighborhoods of Villarreal and for a thousand-year-old city, their book is a lot thicker and a lot heavier. We had a wonderful conversation talking about our two communities. Villarreal is just over 17,000 people, but it serves as the sort of the center of a region. It's about 49,000. So they provide busing that goes out into neighboring communities, water and sewer, a whole bunch of different things that we don't have to provide. When I explained that we were sort of the commercial center, we're only 13,500 people, but the North Shore is 68,000. And we're a lot more compact. And they were amazed that, you know, we don't have to do water and sewer infrastructure for everybody the way they do. We don't have to create our own bus system. And they were actually surprised to see how much cooperation we have that, you know, we don't provide the service that others buy into, but we actually share costs all across the North Shore. So, well, really interesting meeting, looking at how our two sets of governments run. Anyway, so I have this book and then a couple of years ago, I made an exchange with Passau, Germany is where Nicolais' German Exchange Program, we do a German, we do a program exchange with Passau, Germany. So our kids go there, their kids come here. Well, a few years ago, the, my daughter went to Passau and the mayor of Passau's son came here. And so we did an exchange at that point and exchanged some gifts. So I have that book that I've never actually put in the case upfront. So I'm going to put the Passau book as well as the Villarreal book. Since they were presented to the city, I'll put them in the case in the front. And if anybody comes in, clerk, they say they would like to look at it. I did post on Nextdoor. So if somebody wants to look at it, they can open the case and get it out for them. Thank you. So that is my report. And at this point, we are at the end of our public portion of our meeting. As you all know, those of you watching on the Zoom or here in the room, we are in the middle of a search for a new city administrator. And tonight we'll be discussing potential candidates and that due by state statute does allow us to convene in closed session. So I'd like to ask for a motion to convene in closed session, subject to the statutes indicated on our agenda, please.
A move.
Move, Alderman Shaw. Is there a second?
I can.
Second, Alderman Gelhard. Before I call for the vote, when we reconvene in open session, will there be any votes? No, okay. So that we will not be conducting any business, we'll be reconvening in open session when we are done discussing candidates and the only item of business at that point will be a motion to adjourn. Okay, perfect. All right, can I, we made the motion and seconded all this in favor of going into closed session. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now in closed session. We give time to clear the room, stop the Zoom. Question. I Shaw seconded by Vukovich. All in favor of adjourning, say aye. Opposed? No, we stand adjourned. All right.
Philip, can you hit stop reporting?